PM, regular meeting of the City Commission. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Dick will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads.
Dear God, thank you for giving us the opportunity to live in a place where we have the ability to pick our leaders. Thank you for providing for us and our community. Thank you for all the people who make this community work. And please with us as we make decisions for our community. And please watch over all those who watch over and protect us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Do we have any additions or corrections to the October 15th meeting minutes?
No.
Okay.
Look good.
Not they stand approved as submitted? At this time, we have public comment, which is, gives anybody in the audience a time to address the commission if you're not on the agenda. We like to hold it to five minutes, but we have made a few exceptions to that. Is there anyone that wants to address the commission? Okay. Moving right along.
Commissioners, it's my honor to introduce item 6A. Carol Meyer has recently announced her retirement, and this is an opportunity to recognize her contributions, both with her years with Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce and her years with the Kansas Department of Commerce, and the influence she's had on shaping and developing and growing this community. So, Steph certainly recommends approval.
I move that we approve Carol Meyer Day.
I second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Carol Meyer Day. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And Mayor, I can read the proclamation. If you would like to join Carol up, and if we would also invite, probably Mayor just doing Carol at the first, but then afterwards, I think it'd be nice, we have some people here that have worked with her, either as board members to the chamber, or have worked with her on her staff, or worked with her from some of the partner agencies. If we could take a group picture too. So whereas Carol Meyer previously served the Fannie County and City of Garden City for many years, as president of the Garden City Area Chamber of Commerce, prior to assuming a role with the Kansas Department of Commerce, and whereas Carol continued to support the business of Fannie County and Garden City with the tools available through the Kansas Department of Commerce, and whereas Carol advocated tirelessly for Fannie County, Garden City, and all of southwest Kansas, and whereas Carol provided unwavering support for the business retention and recruitment efforts of Fannie County Economic Development Corporation. Now therefore, I, Dan Bankhauser, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 5th, 2019, as Carol Meyer Day in Garden City, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her service to the community. Signed and sealed this day, Dan Bankhauser, Mayor.
One, two, three. Say one more. One, two, three. Okay.
More than Mary.
One, two, three. Say one more. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
You can stay around for a while. You got to stay out.
Quite a while.
Six B. The governing body has asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, as match day in Garden City, Kansas.
Make a motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve December 3rd as match day in Garden City. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Would you like to say a few words about that? And then is there an event where the mayor will read this proclamation, or should we do that here?
Usually we can do it.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. No match day.
Well, thank you. This is the third consecutive match day in Garden City that the Western Kansas Community Foundation is hosting on December 3rd. It coincides with Giving Tuesday, which is globally now known as Giving Tuesday. In this country, of course, it follows Thanksgiving, the first Tuesday after Thanksgiving. And match day is an opportunity for Garden City and the surrounding area, I would say, to give back to the communities that we serve. And match day in this city is set up with participating nonprofits. They're going to benefit from matching dollars that the community foundation is providing. This year, we have $75,000.
Oh, my goodness. Congratulations.
Provided by a lot of generous donors in this community. And we are going to distribute those matching dollars proportionately to the total amounts that we raise. Last year, we raised over $400,000 on match day. So, it's hard to match. But we're going to try it. And there are a couple of nonprofits here also in this room. So maybe we can do a group picture and make this visible. Yeah, we are going to do a major community outreach through all sorts of media outreach in the next couple of weeks. So you will hear more about it. But we have, as of now, 33 organizations that are participating. So it's very exciting. We hope to make this a real community philanthropy day. And the previous years have shown that this community can step up. It's an incredible philanthropic community. And we're very, very grateful to be here and do this here. And make this a day after, you know, Black Friday and Cyber Monday. To make it, give it a positive spin and give back to the great organizations that do so much great work in our community. So, please spread the word. December 3rd.
Connie, congratulations to you and your staff, and also your board of directors. That's incredible.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I can read this. If you want to join Connie and then anybody else that would like to join, if you're an agency that's supported, or if you're part of the Western Kansas Community Foundation, come on down. Whereas, match day was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. And whereas, match day is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas, match day is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas, it is fitting and proper on match day and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the City of Garden City. And whereas, match day is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now, therefore, I, Dan Bankhauser, Mayor, do hereby proclaim December 3rd, 2019, as match day in the City of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in a way that is personally meaningful. Sign and seal this 5th day of November, 2019.
Say one more. One, two, three.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Connie. Good luck.
Thank you.
Keep it in the middle of the meeting. Anything to get up and down?
Six C. The governing body has asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the week of November 11th through 15th as American Education Week in Garden City.
Make a motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve November 11th through the 15th, 2019, as American Education Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'm going to read this.
We talked about him reading at the school board meeting on Monday evening, so.
I'm all for that.
Give him a reminder about it.
Okay. Get me on the agenda.
Yeah, I'll get you on the agenda. I think I can do that.
Good.
Now ready for item 7A. Finance Director Melinda Hits will report on the simulation test for responding to a western.
What about 6D?
Oh, sorry.
6D, yep.
6D.
Okay.
The governing body's asked to consider and approve a request under code section 635 to allow possession, consumption, and sale of cereal malt beverages and alcoholic liquor during the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center event on Saturday, December 14th, 2019, at the Fannie County 4H Building.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the request as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the request from Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Now for 7A. Finance Director Melinda Hits is going to report on the simulation test for responding to a financial emergency. Melinda?
In the aftermath of the fire that occurred at the Tyson Processing Plant, the City of Garden City decided to conduct a financial emergency simulation. This simulation was used to train and educate employees on the immediate changes and effects that a loss of a large employer would have on the city and its organization. Senior staff evaluated their current and upcoming projects and provided the attached information that shows projects and purchases that could be stopped if deemed necessary. After the meeting, staff was directed to operate in a manner that would be in accordance to a financial emergency. During the two months since, several projects and purchases were put on hold, and there was a concerted effort to reduce overtime for many employees. After these two months, the senior staff met and discussed their experience with being in a situation like this. It was concluded that holding off on hiring positions that were vacant and projects created the biggest amount of savings. Overtime paid to employees was considered the hardest to control. Increasingly, this is not the result of typical city operations, but rather the impact on overtime resulting from city staff providing assistance at various community events which occur on the weekends. Had this been an actual response to financial emergency, the staff learned that while these events are important to the community, events like parades, running festivals would be significantly impacted. After the conclusion of the two months, the departments were told that they could go back to their current operations. I thought it was a great learning tool for some of our younger staff members in the organization. Some of us have been through a situation like this, like me. But no, it was a very good learning tool. And they all really thought they learned a lot from it. There are things that we can put off, but then there are things that we need to look at in our community that you don't really want to hold off on, especially things that bring the community together, so.
So Melinda, did you do a debrief of all the departments afterwards? Or how did you communicate the?
Yeah, we did a debriefing after two months, just to see how everybody graded themselves on controlling costs. And it, you know, this doesn't just affect the department heads, it affects our employees. You know, a lot of them depend on overtime, and they kind of plan for it. So when that's reduced, you know, it does affect the employee base also. So we need to look at that when we're conducting something like this in the future.
Thank you.
But as you can see, there was a lot of dollars on those spreadsheets that we held off on.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions?
No.
Matt, would you like to add anything else?
No, just my appreciation to the senior staff for this exercise. It was, I mean, to sort of go through a two-month simulation, creating an emergency in your mind that may not materially exist is a big ask, but they all did a good job. I appreciate Melinda leading that effort. And Jared Smith helped put together some of the sort of spreadsheet of the value of some of the changes that were identified. So if in that situation, what could we, you know, what could we kind of real-time cut and make that sort of impact? Melinda spoke to this. Early action is, is the key to kind of saving the operational ability of your organization throughout a, you know, several month or even multi-year downturn, or dramatic downturn. And so you don't want to wait and see how it pans out in six months. If you can make those changes immediately, and you can identify those when times are good, you know what to do when times are bad. And so this is consistent with the financial management guidelines that were put together a couple of years ago. Melinda was involved in helping the commission create those. Really, the impetus behind it was what to do in a financial emergency. So that's one of the policies. The other 13 are all our other financial management things. But really, this was the driver. And to be able to have something that gave us a scenario, a very real scenario to use, I think was a little bit of a silver lining. Certainly would have preferred the fire not occur. But this is a way we could use that to strengthen the community long-term.
Mrs. Hits, you are satisfied with our reserve balances and our things to be able to cover that short-term, at least the immediate cost that we were able to cut? I mean, there were a lot of things, like contracts, and overtime is just going to already be figured in, and those kind, and positions maybe recently filled or whatever, that we were going to have to cover no matter what. Were you satisfied that our financial guidelines, the way they're written in the current reserves, the way that we have it outlined to keep, met our obligations under this kind of scenario?
Yes, we did meet our guidelines. There might be a few changes in the future that we experienced when we were reading through some of the.
It's a good validation.
Yes. And that we might bring to you in January for a few little, few little changes, but nothing significant.
Really good exercise. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7B. Garden City High School Robotics Team participated in the 20th Annual Kansas Best Robotics Competition on October 26th. It was at Wichita State University, and the robotics team finished third in the Engineering Notebook, and third in the Best Award, qualifying for the Regional Championship in Denver on December 7th and 8th, 2019. And so, maybe to speak to the role that, or the connection to city staff? I know if, Mike, you wanted to. Might be a little bit of a surprise, but.
Your improbabilities here.
Yeah, the robotics team approached us and asked if we could come and visit with them on how, what the process is to restore power when there's a power outage or a major storm or something, the steps that we go through. And of course, we said absolutely, we'd be happy to. So, two employees met with them at the high school, and they went through the whole process of, this is what we do. And then, after that, they went to Wichita. The team went to Wichita to compete, and they asked if we could take our, we have a little electric town, we call it. It's just a tabletop that, we've had it downtown, we've had it in the schools, and you can actually energize the wires, and there's little sparks. And if we could take that with us, with them to Wichita, so we did. And so, everybody was impressed, the fact that we, the city, were able, they were able there. We were able to be able to help and kind of explain what our robotics team was talking about during that process. And we were just very happy to be able to assist. And we've been asked, I'm not sure yet if a decision's been made, if we could go to Denver with them on their regional efforts. So, we're very, very proud of them. They did a very, very good job, so.
Very good.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Items C through F are staff reports. You have any questions on those?
So the only one, I know that, if the, I had a question on the, with the police. I know that they're working through all of that. Are we going to have a pre-meeting on that? I was wondering on the, I know that all of the changes.
Action plan?
Yeah, the action plan. That, it.
Yeah, I think we've been moving those reports to this meeting. Is that right? Chief, like, on occasion, that the update would be given here, so it's televised in the community.
That's correct, Matt. The updates are given every commission meeting. The ones that are marked out in yellow are the ones that are completed, and the ones that aren't are the ones we're still working on.
And so, we'll, we'll kind of pick some times. There'll be an update in every meeting that's written. We'll pick some times when there's kind of big jumps or notable milestones achieved that we can do, do a little bit more in-depth presentation where chief can speak to those issues. So that, I think that's what we're thinking.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
And then, could I ask a quick question? On the, well, not for chief, but airport wise? I know we passed a couple of months ago for the new beacon light out there. I can't remember, I thought we were supposed to have the beacon light installed like in October. But could you give us an update on kind of where that's at?
Yes, good afternoon. It has been delayed a little bit for the beacon. There is an extremely long lead time from ordering the beacon. It's not mass-produced. So it's about 21 to 24 weeks prior, after the, after the order of the beacon, and then the installation. So we're looking at probably March or April before that's installed.
Okay. And then, you have some good news?
Yes, Nepali's is back open. Giovanni is back and in service. He has all of his equipment. He's moved in, and he did kind of a soft opening last week, but it was very cold because the heater died in the restaurant. But that was replaced yesterday, so they are in full operation. And he's looking forward to the community to come back out, give Nepali's a chance, and he's excited to be back into our community.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would like to maybe just make you aware and see if the commission wants to explore potentially moving the regularly scheduled meeting of 11/19, our next meeting. The, that, if you'll notice on meetings of note, corresponds with the Department of Transportation's local consult meeting. That's probably going to be the most important regional meeting in the creation of the Kansas Forward Plan, which is presumed to be the next long-term transportation plan in the state. That's going to call a few of us from a staff level away. I think there's some interest among some commissioners attending. I know Commissioner Burns was already planning on being out of town that, she has a conflict on that meeting date anyway. Right now, it doesn't appear that we have anything on the November 19th agenda for which a notice of public hearing, or something that forces that date and forces that time. But if we were to move that meeting, that would need to be a decision since it's a regularly scheduled meeting. You all would need to make that decision.
Did you have a recommendation?
I don't.
What about the next day?
We've figured out from a staff point how to cover it, if it stays the same. I will tell you, right now, that agenda doesn't appear to be a big agenda.
Could do it the next day, I guess.
Yeah, and I don't know with that, I don't know with your calendars.
Yeah, I'm leaving Friday evening prior. So that would back, my attendance would be the week previous. I could attend any, any day. That might be.
The following week?
Following it.
Are you saying the 25th or the 29th?
So the 15th, I could be at a meeting on the 15th, but I leave the night of the 15th, which is the end of the second week in our cycle, four days early.
What about the 26th?
Right, was it 26th would that work?
Yeah, she wouldn't be here, but would everybody else be here? Not trying to leave you out, but.
It's okay. You don't schedule around me, it's okay. I understand. I should schedule around you.
That'd be the week. That would be the following Tuesday.
That'd work for me.
Would that work for everybody?
Okay.
26th of November.
Like, does anybody on the staff that's here know of anything that makes that a bad deal?
Yeah, I was, I mean, I like your idea about either maybe moving it, since we can accommodate Commissioner Burns moving, if we could do maybe the 18th or the 20th. Would that cause any problem? And that would keep it in the same week? Could we just move it today? Or? I mean, I could do that too.
Yeah, I can do it Wednesday. That's what I was thinking is, keep it that same week.
The chamber breakfast is that morning, but.
Yeah, but that wouldn't affect us. What's your choice?
I've got a couple of appointments, but I'll try to get, if we do it that day, I can try to get it moved around. Yeah, I would have to.
You want to move it? You want?
Do we do it Monday or Wednesday?
I'd say Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
The 20th?
Wednesday, the 20th?
20th, okay.
Yeah, make a motion. Do we need to motion that?
At 1:00?
At 1:00.
1:00, yeah.
So we'll make a motion to move the meeting, the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, to November 20th, starting at 1:00 PM in the commission chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move our second meeting in November to the 20th. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. 20th it is.
All right. Meetings of note. Let's see, a lot of things on there. Now that your schedule's freed up, you're more than welcome to attend the November 19th meeting.
What time would we leave?
I leave around noon.
Noon? I'll plan on going.
And then, the mayor's picked his date for the Christmas dinner there, December 6th, so. Mark it on your social calendars. That's all we have on meetings of note. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2494-2019A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number 2494-2019A.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appropriations ordinance 2494-2019A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10A. Mayor and Commissioners, you're asked to consider and approve a resolution which would amend the requirements and membership of the Public Utilities Advisory Board. If approved, it would be resolution number 2829-2019. Mike?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The Public Utilities Advisory Board was created on August 19th, 2014 by resolution number 2598-2014. It created the board, and then on October 6th of 2015, excuse me, through resolution number 2644-2015, the governing body amended certain sections of the initial resolution to change the terms of the membership. Again, then on September 3rd of 2019 of this year, the governing body voted to reduce the membership requirements for the Public Utilities Advisory Board from nine members to five members to accommodate public interest and participation in this particular board. Those changes to the requirements and term lengths of the membership would need to be adopted by resolution if you choose to change that. So the resolution in front of you today, if approved, there would be a total of five representatives on the board. They'd be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the governing body. The membership of the board shall be structured such that a minimum of four members of the board shall be residents of the City of Garden City. The remaining member, either a resident of Garden City, Kansas, or a resident of Fannie County, Kansas. The appointment shall be made for the following terms. One shall be for a term which expires January 1 of 2021. Two will have terms which would expire on January 1 of 2022. And two would be for the terms which would expire. And two would be for the terms which would expire January 1 of 2023. And then thereafter, they would just roll over every three years and need to be reappointed. This came to you back on September 3rd as a request from the Public Utilities Advisory Board. The chairman and the members voted to bring it forward to see if you would consider doing this. There's no financial impact to the city, and the staff recommends approval.
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2829-2019. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2829-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to designate Sunset Terrace Estates as a rural housing incentive district property within the city. If approved, it would be resolution number 2830-2019.
Is that?
Carol?
Or Melissa.
Or Melissa.
Melissa, sorry.
The state of Kansas proposed a statute that allows cities of certain populations within counties of a certain population to offer incentives for affordable housing. Garden City meets the qualifications required by the state and is able to establish such rural housing incentive districts pending the approval of the Secretary of Commerce. In order to obtain approval from the Secretary of Commerce, the city must first pass a resolution making certain findings and determinations as to the availability of housing within the city. Staff will then publish the resolution and send the required information to the Secretary of Commerce for approval. This resolution includes one potential RHID property that was not considered in previous resolutions. This property will be known as the Sunset Terrace Estates and was annexed by ordinance 2852-2019 by the governing body on October 1st, 2019. There, this property is plus or minus 59.7 acres and generally located at Highway 50 and South Towns Road. The alternatives before you as the governing body, you may approve the attached resolution. You may approve the attached resolution with amendments, or you may not approve the attached resolution. Staff recommends alternative one, the governing body may approve the attached resolution. There are no fiscal obligations under the RHID program for the city.
So Melissa, so that again, is this part of that step-by-step process we're moving towards where they can actually plat it? And so is this the second of the?
This is the very first step before we can even come to you, before they even plat it, to just be able to be considered an RHID from the state. And so once they get this approval, then they'll come back before you again with their full RHID pro forma and will hold the public hearing as well.
I move that we approve resolution 2830-2019.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2830-2019 concerning the Sunset area. Is there any further, Terrace Estates, I guess is the way it says. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve changes to itinerant business licensing. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2854. And just this general discussion is, covers items C, D, and E. All of those would require ordinances, so I'll turn it over to Carol to give the background on these.
And there's a PowerPoint if, right down there at the bottom. Thank you. I just put the ordinance on to this PowerPoint. Might be a little bit easier to go through all of the proposed changes. As you know, the changes to the itinerant business license has been a subject that has come up in pre-meetings. There has been an actual city commission meeting back in September. And then also, there's been some various stakeholders and public speaking at these meetings. So staff has gathered, all of the information gathered from all of the meetings. We've put it together, discussed this heavily with legal department, and we feel like we've come to the direction that the, the commission would like us to go to. So I'm going to go to, through it. There are three different ordinances. The first one is just amending the itinerant business ordinance, which is also adding in mobile food vendors. The second and third just have to do with the fees alone. So right now, I'm just going to go over the first one. So the first big change is to the definitions section, and this is in section 22.101, the definitions. The first one is the itinerant business. We did change that definition just a little bit. As you can see, the underline of the, everything in yellow is things that were changed. Underline is what we added, and cross out is what we took away. Just a little bit more description in what an itinerant business is. We felt that that, that needed some, and, and I can go through this. If you'd like me to read all the words, I can. But I, I'm hoping that you got a chance to read through it before. The next one is, I did want to point out the last sentence on there. There is, the last sentence in the definition for itinerant business is "mobile food vendors means a person," oh, sorry. "A mobile food vendor as defined in this section shall not be considered an itinerant business." So right up front, we're saying that there's a difference between the itinerant and the mobile food vendors. The next definition is "mobile food vendors." We did create a definition, which is "means a person, business, corporation, association, or other entity, however organized, that offers food and/or beverage for sale from any self-contained motor vehicle." Okay, and then, I actually have it up here as the first one. The other change to the definition is the change to the local and non-local. We did add in that to be considered either local or non-local, you could either have 1,000 square feet of retail, which was what, what was in it before. But we added office and warehouse. And then also that if you live anywhere in Finney County, you can be considered local. So if you don't live in Finney County, that's where we're changing it to non-local. And then 12 months, we left that in there, executive 12 months. Under the exempt, exemptions, we added special event. So any type of special event, Fall Fest, the Empire Beef Days, anytime we have a food truck for any special event, they are exempt from these regulations. So everything else that you're going to hear does not apply to those food, food trucks or businesses that belong just to those special events. Another, the other item we did in exemptions, we took out G. That kind of had to do with mobile food vendors. So we just, it wasn't really needed since we were adding them in. Under 22-105 prohibited acts, we did change the hours from 8:00 to 8:00 as opposed to from 7:00 to 10:00. So itinerant businesses can perform between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM daily. We did add tent into the structures. Tent was one of the items that we added. Another item under K, we did add in that all temporary structures must be removed by 8:00 PM daily so that we don't get any concerns about something being left up. Maybe somebody got a business license for a month, and then they want to just go out there every weekend. So there could be issues with things getting blown over and things looking unsightly. So we did put in that temporary structures need to be removed. Yes.
I have one question.
Yes.
It says here, "mobile food vendors," it says, "offers food or beverage for sale by any self-contained motor vehicle." Does that mean you could sell it out of a car? I mean, I don't know. I think...
They probably wouldn't be able to get their food license out of a car, but...
It has to be, you know, three sinks and...
Right.
All that, but I mean...
They do, they do have to get their license from the state.
Do you want to say licensed?
No.
No, it's already covered in the other sections.
No, okay.
So we do feel like it is covered. It will be covered, so...
It's covered in the new article. Is the trailer also, like if it's a trailer, if it's a self-contained trailer, or is that something you would have to?
I think we're looking at a mobile, a self-contained motor vehicle.
Okay.
There are going to be situations that we, we have to look at from time to time and may have to modify or amend our code section because we're relatively new into this area of regulation.
Yeah.
And we know that.
Okay, and then we did take out M. So this means that one itinerant business can have, we can have more than one itinerant business on the same property before it was just allowing one. Under section 22-131, license required, we did change up the 1 and 2 and 3 a little bit. Kind of combined most of it into number 1. Number 4, we did change up number 4 a little bit, adding, we wanted dimensions of temporary structures. And then, instead of just getting information on just the applicant, we wanted anyone that was going to be going out conducting operating business. This thing is really sensitive. Okay, and then continuing on with the license required. Number 5, we just changed that again, once again, not just the applicant, but to referring to anyone conducting business. And then number 8, we did add that, or we did add that one, and it's not underlined, but that one was added in, that we wanted permission from property owners if, if there's an itinerant business on a certain property owner, property. Oh my gosh. It likes, it like pauses and then it goes really fast. Okay, okay, so this section is the new section, mobile food vendors. All of this is new. Basically, just, we've already defined it, so just saying where they can operate. Once again, it's mentioning that they, they can't go in the public right of way unless it's a special event. They can't go on a vacant lot. They can't interfere with safety or traffic.
I'll do it.
Only hit it once, thank you. Let's see. We also added in some items as, that address the physical structure that, that needs to be maintained in good repair, that it needs to be safe, that it needs to be, right down here is where it talks about a state permit issued by the state of Kansas. Right now, it's through the Department of Agriculture, but depending on where it is, we do require that. And then, they require a license. You, you can go to the next one.
This is the next one?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was looking at your screen and not my screen. Okay, um, all right. So I did want to bring up mobile food truck inspections. We did just recently adopt the 2018 fire code along with the, with building code. The 2018 fire code does require inspections of mobile food trucks. So there's an option here that we have, but let me just go over what those inspections cover. Basically, it's a safety inspection, making sure that the person, the owner of the truck has what is needed to put out a fire in their truck if, if that should happen. It's only, the inspections are only for food trucks we do, which do cooking with grease-laden vapors. So somebody that's just selling candy or snow cones, they don't have to get inspected according to the regulations. You can go ahead and...
Carol, who does the inspections? Is it?
That's fire marshal.
Okay.
Our fire marshal would be doing those. Okay, so there's a couple of options that you can do with this, and this is apart from the amendment. It's basically, you can, you can require the inspection as it is stated in the fire code. If, if this is the case, if you would like to require this inspection, Gene, our fire marshal, will prepare an outline of his inspection processes. And it will be, they will be done once a year or annually. The second option is you can, you may choose to not require mobile food truck inspections. And if this decision was made, we would need to have an addendum created to the fire code that says we would like to delete or omit this language from the fire code. It does not pertain to the city. And if you would like to choose the second option, then that, we would come back at a later date, the next commission meeting or the one after that with wording on, on this omission from this requirement to inspect food trucks.
Carol, I noticed that you are recommending that we, alternative number two, that we forego the fire inspections. And can you tell me a little bit about the rationale behind that? Why that staff recommendation is there?
Well, there's some concern. There is a requirement in, in this new inspections. It, it could be a costly fire suppression system. There are ways to make it a little less costly, but it, it could be rather costly. We do feel like it is getting inspected, or the mobile food trucks are being inspected by the state of Kansas. So we feel like that's, that's covering some of, of the issues. But we wanted to leave the option up to you whether or not you felt it was necessary.
Can you elaborate a little bit on what kind of inspections in the, the timeframe or the current, the periodicity of the inspections by the state of Kansas that are done for these food trucks?
The...
Does KDHE inspect them on an annual basis, on a monthly basis, on a?
No.
No.
And honestly, they are not required to inspect ones when they go to the events. So the, the ones that go to events, they are not required to be inspected by the state of Kansas. They wouldn't actually be required to be inspected by us either because they're, they fall under special events. But I, I'm not sure on the details on exactly when the state, on the ones that they're required to inspect, at what time. I do know when a mobile food truck vendor, when they go to any event over six times, then they're required by the state to get their inspection. But I'm not sure on how often they go back and re-inspect them on that.
So when you talk about the inspection and the cost, is it, so are they given the timeframe if they don't pass inspection? Or are they shut down? Or how does that all?
Yeah, they're shut down if, if they don't meet the requirements, yes.
If that's a full fire protection, do you know, Gene is, I mean, are you talking about like, like a regular restaurant has, or? Because that's, that's a big deal.
Yeah, there are some food trucks that are established now that have these full fire protection systems in them already. My thought process on this is, the code allows, in the, in the administrative chapters, to allow on a case-by-case basis to allow modifications of certain parts of the code, where I can go in and say, okay, we'll look at your overall lineup here. If it's okay for you just to have a Class K fire extinguisher, which is $300, as opposed to a full-blown kitchen system, which is $3,000, then I think it would be a little easier for them to justify the cost of at least having some type of fire protection in there if they're deep frying, if they're cooking hamburgers or anything like that. The other flip side of that is, is the propane. Most of these places cook on portable propane, so the inspection process would also include verifying that their propane tanks are secure, make sure their lines are secure so they have no issues of flash fire. Because if these are mobile food trucks and they're moving around, as they move, if they're, if nothing's braced or, or tied down, there could be some issues where you have things pulling against each other, correct?
Yeah.
I feel uncomfortable with us completely foregoing inspections if there's not an adequate, you know, other, other inspection that's reliably being done. And I think for the public safety standpoint, for the person operating, as well as the public and the other food trucks that might be around, or the public, at least to have our fire marshal go out and make an assessment and say, you know, in a reasonable fashion, this is what you need to be safe, I think is a, is a reasonable ask.
Food trucks have been around for decades, and they haven't had this before, though. Have you seen a rash of anything that would cause this to come about? Besides, we just adopted a new code that just kind of, as a side, this was a thing that we didn't even think about when we were adopting that code. I mean, I don't see any...
Fire codes?
On the, on this specifically, this is the new, a new part of that thing. So, I mean, it's, it's...
Is, I mean, is there potential to have a fire on one of these food trucks?
Well, the, the, let's look back to where we were and where we are now. Times change. 12 years has gone by since our last code adoption. The reasons we have codes is because things happen. Losses of life happen, accidents happen. And when we start seeing trends of these things happening, and not to say it couldn't happen in Garden City, a lot of these fires that have been having in these mobile food trucks are happening in bigger cities, New York, California, and, and such places, but it could happen. That's why these codes were written, and that's why these new provisions were put into the 2019 code because of these past fires that have been happening. And there was a push from the fire officials across the, across the country to have these provisions put in to the new codes in order to facilitate doing some type of safety inspection to allow...
And they do have to have some type of... And they do have to have some type of fire suppression, fire extinguisher, or something already, just to even get their KDHE or their Kansas permit, don't they have to have that on?
That I do not know. That I do not know.
So, you have documented cases where this has happened in the past?
Yes, there have been documented cases of, and most of the fires, Commissioner, have been related to propane leaks and propane explosions within these trucks.
Not the...
So not the fire suppression?
Not so much the fire suppression, but it's more of the leakage of the propane. The fire suppression would probably be a secondary...
I'm not, I'm not opposed to having an inspection, but a fire extinguisher should be adequate to put out a fire, or long enough to get out of the...
Get out of the...
Well, I think that's what he's saying, is there's enough leeway there that he can go make an assessment and say, this is what you guys need. It doesn't have to be...
We're going to mandate everybody have a fire suppression system, it just has, let's mandate some basic safety measures that are appropriate for whatever...
Yeah.
If you don't have to shut them down, I mean, if you give a written inspection and you say, hey, these are things we recommend, I mean, how would that change the language on that, Carol, then would it...
It would just be alternative one instead of alternative two.
Yes, and I did want to mention that the options that Gene was talking about, there still is a cost. So, you know, we're talking going from about, what, 3,000 to maybe 300 difference in price. So, it's a significant lower that he can lower it, but it's still a cost, so that it, it's, it's up to you. And we can, yes, option one would be the option, if you would like to leave that in. If you would like to change it up even more, you know, because we do have, as a jurisdiction, we do have the ability to take the, the fire code and then say, you know, we want to put this in, or omit this, and then the city's going to do this, we can look into that as well. And so it doesn't have to be cut and dry, either one or two, there could be a variation on that.
Because I think the cost, I mean, you know, your, your profit margin is, I mean, that really, well, yeah, and you begin to cut into that with a 300, even if it's $300 inspection. I mean, I understand the safety, but I just, that's the...
It's not a $300 inspection, it's a $300 cost to put in a...
Oh, I see. To put in a fire extinguisher?
Well, no, but if you have to put in a...
Full suppression, huh?
A suppression.
Well, right, but I'm surprised that they don't have a fire, I mean, that, that's not required in any type of food safety, that a fire extinguisher is not, when you're dealing with gray, when you're dealing with grease or those kind of things, so...
Well, I think that's, he's saying that's why the fire marshals have indicated that this is what's...
Can we get something in between those two?
Necessary.
One and two?
It seems like, yeah, all or nothing, so...
Yeah, we certainly can do that. The way that the ordinance has been provided to you, it doesn't mention anything about, or if you, if you picked, I should say, the ordinance was written without any mention of inspections by the city. We can adopt that and then amend it, present options to you, or we can just table the whole thing and then just present options on the fire code part or the inspection part.
So do we, do we inspect them now?
No.
Okay.
We have a question here from the others.
I just, I...
Come up to the mic and state your name, please.
My name's Bonnie Brubieska, and I've been, I have a mobile food trailer. I've been in the mobile food business since 1995. I do not have the fire suppression system that he's speaking of. There are a lot of trailers that do have it. Kansas, Colorado, those are the states I work mainly, they don't require that as of yet. Having a Type K fire extinguisher like he was talking about, yes, they're expensive, they're expensive to maintain. Why would you not have them, though? I mean, if you have a grease fire, you're going to want to protect yourself, your employees, your equipment. So, we don't get, I mean, I have been inspected, a fire inspection at, in Colorado, usually when I go to Pueblo, there is a fire inspection. We have to make sure that our propane bottles are tied down, so that way they're not going to just float up and kill people, you know, and stuff. So we are inspected that, they check and make sure, you know, that my fire extinguishers are all maintained. I have, in my food truck, I have my Type K for my grease fires, and I have my regular fire extinguisher, too. They make sure, they do inspect us at different events, but like, I know the city of Wichita, for instance, all their required, restaurants are required to have the fire suppression systems, but mobile food trucks are given, like, a special permission to not have them as long as they have the Type K fire extinguisher.
Was there, I mean, was there additional cost when you're inspected? Is it, is it expensive, the inspection, or is it just part of your...
It was part of the event.
Okay.
It was part of the event. So, I mean, but I, myself, I wouldn't be opposed, you know, like, I have an electrical inspection at the Colorado State Fair that cost me $500, but that's at the Colorado State Fair, that's not at the city of Garden City while I'm trying to sell phone cases. I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, a $25 fee from the fire department, just to kind of, and you know, it'd make him feel safer, it'd make me feel safer, to know that I was in compliance, and maybe he has some different ideas of ways to keep myself and others safe, you know, but I wouldn't be opposed to having some type of inspection, a yearly thing, you know, and as far as the Department of Ag inspections, they don't require the fire extinguishers, they don't look at the fire extinguishers, because they're just looking at keeping people safe from the sickness and illness of food. So they don't really look at that. They look at how we prepare food, you know, as far as cold, hot, all that kind of stuff, but they, I can't say that they look at the way we do that as far as fire.
Thank you for the information.
Couldn't we put that in number one and say, a minimum of a Type K if you're using grease?
Well, but when he does...
If you're using grease, the Type K has to be from the grease.
Well, but it would be under the fire marshal's inspection if we do approve it.
That's already the code that we already adopted.
That's already the code. I make, I make a motion...
The thing I was going to say is, why, we, I mean, if we're talking about looking at the code specifically, why don't we do alternative two, and then when we're amending the fire code, then we either amend it full scale, I mean, we take it on all the way and say, this all looks good, or Fire, K would be fine, or whatever.
Yeah, because I like the idea of really adopting most of that and then leaving that section really thinking about...
And I think that's what, I think that's what alternative two is doing, is adopting the wholesale besides the fire part, and then talking about what needs to be amended on the fire side.
We already adopted the fire code.
We already did. That's why the option is...
But specifically pertaining to the...
You can amend the fire code.
Right.
Yet to be amended for the...
For food, mobile food vendors.
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
Amend to what, is the, I mean, is, I guess my question? I mean, he's, he's saying we have, he has the ability to make an assessment and say, what is safe, what is not, what kind of equipment do you need? Are you saying you want to amend it to give the fire marshal the ability to also say, you know, you don't have to have a fire extinguisher, or I...
Something that's different than what's in the actual adopted code. And if there's ways around, like we're saying, a special type of suppression system that's cheaper than a, whatever's in that code, then we need to put that into that wording.
Yeah, and I'm saying, well, and again, I think, you know...
But that's a different...
Ms. Brubieska talked about, you know, checking the hoses, I think that's important. I think, you know, having minimum requirements for a fire extinguisher, at least for one, and then if you have grease, okay, I mean, I don't think those are unreasonable, but I think the thing that, that you're talking about is, is again, I think most of the code, but if you adopt number one, then you automatically, there really isn't a discussion anymore. You can't, I guess you could go back and amend it later, but then you're going to, all of these food vendors are now are going to have to go and, you're going to change the whole discussion if you adopt number one. What we're trying to do is really help food vendors get out there and do their job. If you adopt option one, then it really, it shuts them down. Because again, until they get these inspections and they're all approved. If we adopt option two, then we have the opportunity to really dig in to the fire code and say, let's do something that makes sense, whether it's $25 inspection or, because I do think that's, I, I, I think it's important, and everyone wants to be safe, you know, I mean, even the food truck vendors, they wouldn't want to do anything that's not. But I think that would be, if you do option one, you really, you are going to shut down a lot of food truck vendors right away.
Doing option two also, it allows us to come back with, with other options in the inspection process.
I mean, that's what I hear you saying, so, right.
So, we could go into, we could give you more detail on that part of it. It's basically just kind of leaving that inspection part out of everything right now, even though we would be required to do, oops, to do them.
Wait, it would leave the, could you say that again? I guess I'm, I'm not understanding, you said, we would leave the inspections out, but we'd still be required to do them? I don't follow.
We would, we would leave the, I'm getting myself confused. We would leave the inspection, no mention of inspections in the, in the itinerant business license or mobile food vendor license. It would leave all of the inspection part out of that. You know, the only place the inspection part would be in would be in the fire code. So then, we could come back at a, at a later date and amend the fire code.
Right.
Did that make sense?
To include a minimum of a Type K...
So we wouldn't be talking anything about inspections in...
But isn't that what exists right now?
You don't have to, you don't have to have a Type K.
You can't have anything, according to...
Well, it, well, no. Do you have a date on it? Is it March 31st on your adoption of the 2018?
Yeah, the 2018, you'll take full effect.
Yeah, so March 31st.
March 31st next year.
Yeah.
Right.
So, after March 31st, yes, they do have to, they do have to follow the inspections that are listed in the fire code, yes. But as of right now, we're kind of in that limbo period where you can use the 2018, or you can use the, the older version, which doesn't require inspections.
So it gives us chance to review and modify if there's anything that we need to modify in that fire code?
Yes.
I don't want us to see...
So this is ordinance 2854-19, and then...
Did, did that answer your question, Lindsay?
Not exactly.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we're arguing against here, but, okay.
Well...
It's the fire code, is what we're actually arguing.
The...
We're arguing against the fire code.
I guess I should, I should clarify the, the alternatives, because alternative two does say that you are approving the proposed changes to itinerant business license ordinance and not require mobile food truck inspections. Really, that should say not require mobile food truck inspections within the itinerant license. It, it does say it in the fire code, but it, well, in the 2018 fire code, but it doesn't, it won't say anything about inspections in the itinerant business license. Does that, does that make sense? It, it only talks about, I, I hope I'm making sense. It only talks about, so it won't make any mention about you're required to do this inspection. When, when we, if, if you adopt, if we come back and say, yeah, we want to leave 2018 fire code the way it is, that means when someone comes in to get an itinerant business license, or they want to do a mobile food truck, they, they will be required, and they'll say, well, it's not in your ordinance, well, it's not in this ordinance, but it's in the fire code.
Right.
So that's where, that's where that will come in.
It's option two, that's what that says.
Yes.
Yeah, I move that we approve ordinance number 20, or option two, have ordinance 2854-2019.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance 2854-2019, option two. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion approved. Okay, D, I guess. Is that...
The next two, items D and E are the fees associated with the ordinance you just passed.
Yeah, okay.
If approved, item D would be 2855-2019, and E would be 2856-2019.
Okay. So the first one, the itinerant business license fee, we did, on, on the screen are the changes. It's basically, we took, got rid of the local and non-local, I shouldn't say, well, I shouldn't say non-local, because we kept the non-local, but the annual fee, we, we turned it in because it just, the way we had local itinerant license was just one time a year, and what we did was we changed it to annual, monthly, and daily. So the annual local itinerant business license fee would be $300 for one year, monthly would be $100, and daily would be $25. And then the non-local, we kept that at what it was before, which was 900 and 300. 900 for a monthly and daily at 300. We did not provide an annual option for that one. So your alternatives are to accept what SAF has proposed, or you can make changes to the fee schedule that is, is listed or shown before you, or you can table the item.
I make a motion we approve ordinance 2855-2019.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance 2855-2019, which is amending the itinerant license fees. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried.
Okay, and the last item, ordinance 2856, for, an ordinance for mobile food vendor fees. On the screen are the fees that are proposed right now. We don't have any requirements or any fees for mobile food vendors. The annual mobile food vendor license fee would be $600, the monthly fee would be $200, and the daily fee would be $50. And this is just for the, the mobile food truck vendors.
Okay.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2856-2019.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance 2856-2019, establishing mobile food vendor license fees. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed? Motion carried.
Thank you for taking the extra time to get all the, these stuff all worked out. I think it's good for, I think it'll be good for our mobile vendors, food vendors.
I'm going to have to step down.
Okay, all, ready for item 12A? If anybody's asked to consider and approve a settlement agreement with American Warrior Construction for special assessments due on 40.71 acres on West Joe McGraw Street. In 2012, the city of Garden City and Preferred Cardage Service, Inc., entered into a development agreement, a copy of which is attached to this staff item, which improved lots five and six, block one of Taylor North Edition, using deferred special assessment financing for road, water, and sanitary sewer improvements. The land was zoned for medium industrial use but did not develop. In 2018, American Warrior Construction purchased 40.71 acres of this land on West Joe McGraw Street, which still had the full special assessment balance of $588,491 due the city. The city agreed to allow that burden to transfer to American Warrior Construction with the understanding to work in principle on a negotiated settlement price of the past due amount to assist in the development of the property as a residential subdivision. Both parties had been in discussion since that time, and delays in getting a proposal in front of the city commissioner are product of unrelated projects for both American Warrior Construction and the city taking precedent. Based on discussions between staff and American Warrior Construction company representatives, the following transaction is spelled out in an attached draft agreement for the governing body's review and consideration. I'll hit the major points of this agreement. First, the city agrees to settle for outstanding financial obligation of $588,491 due the city in special assessments for $400,000. The city agrees to purchase for $50,000 a credit against the amount owed the city 2.97 acres of property on West Joe McGraw Street, as shown in the plat and development agreement. Closing expenses would be shared evenly by the parties. This piece of property is for utility services or purposes, and I'll have Mike speak to that in a little bit. The city agrees to a $50,000 credit against the amount owed the city for the dedication of the two platted adjacent fort, I'm sorry, let me start again. The city agrees to a $50,000 credit against the amount owed the city for the dedication of two platted adjacent lots, each greater than 10,000 square foot, within the Columbus subdivision for the purpose of adding public benefit above and beyond the public land set aside already provided for in the development agreement. The specific public benefit would be determined later as agreed by both parties. However, at this time, both parties generally understand public benefit to mean additional parkland, a daycare, a church, community center, or any similar facility or combination thereof. The development of physical improvements would be the responsibility of the developer or their assignment. Next bullet point, the city agrees to purchase for a $50,000 credit against the amount owed the city the northernmost 1.79 acres of a 4.77 acre tract at 3111 East Spruce Street. The city would be provided a utility easement across the remaining tract at 3111 East Spruce Street. Replat and closing expenses would be shared evenly by the parties. This property is owned by SNO Investments, but American Warrior Construction represents that it has the permission to include this as part of the agreement. SNO Investments will be party to a formal agreement. SNO Investments will be party to a formal agreement. Next bullet point, the city agrees to reduce by $100,000 the amount owed the city for the excavation and hauling off of approximately 17,000 cubic yards of dirt on the northernmost 1.79 acres of the 311, 3111 East Spruce Street property in a manner designed and engineered by the City of Garden City for the purpose of an area storm, for the purpose of area stormwater management. The removed soil would become the property of American Warrior Construction. This is related, as it says on the bullets point, to stormwater management, and I'll have Sam speak to that particular project, the value of it and how we came to determine the 17,000 cubic yards and the excavation, or the agreement, the agreement to excavate according to our design. The next bullet point is American Warrior Construction pays the city $150,000 due at the time the agreement is signed by both parties. This is really the remaining amount of the 400,000 negotiated price with the deductions that have been mentioned in the previous bullets. The last two are just identifying that the city agrees not to seek the payment of these special assessments until the, until August 1st, 2020, which allows time for all of these terms to be met. And then finally, once all those terms are met, we'll certify that the special assessment balance has been satisfied in full. Your alternatives are to approve the agreement, to modify the agreement for consideration by American Warrior Construction or to not approve the agreement. I want to point out that the, the deferred special assessment development tool of the past, that probably predates us using tax increment financing tools as a strategy, is a way that improvements could be made to a property. The city fronted that money. It's a common, special assessments in and of themselves are a common tool. The deferred special assessment is sort of added investment or risk assumed by the City of Garden City where you would defer payment until property is actually developed. But then at the, the full match, the full maturity mark, whether that be seven years or 10 years, that would be due by the developer. Well, if they hadn't moved any property in 10 years, that was most likely going to go to a tax sale and it was going to be a lien that we had, which happened on a few occasions. And so it came to the point where it was pretty clear these weren't, these properties weren't going to develop or weren't going to develop in a time that suited the property owners. They were in negotiations to sell to American Warrior Construction. The idea of that turning into a, a project that provided the zoning changed would, would begin to cut into the, to the housing shortage. We had an interest in being at the table both from the housing perspective and from a, getting something for the past due amount on the special assessments. So when you look at the 588, that is the total amount of the scheduled annual principal and interest payments. And there's an attachment that I'm going to scroll down to. I believe it's probably near the end of everything that's in your agreement. I think this is, this helps kind of look into the logic of, of our willingness to negotiate. Okay. On the zoom, we can pull back out to read some of these categories. But if you'll see these, these annual amounts, the sum of the top section and the bottom section are the two payments. There's three years that remain unbudgeted, not yet budgeted, so we've already budgeted payment in the bonded interest fund for 2020. This is $58,000, close to $59,000. So three years left and a little over $50,000. It would be our recommendation that the $150,000 cash go to the bonded interest fund, which covers those payments or almost covers the full amount of those payments which haven't yet been budgeted for in bonded interest. All the other ones, the city has essentially eaten the cost from that deferred special assessment strategy. So I think that's all I've got. I would like for Mike to speak quickly to the, the property on the west side of town, the purpose of that tract of land. Like for Sam then to speak quickly to the, the purpose of the 1.79 acres and how that fits into the stormwater, the area stormwater management. Mike?
Okay. The, the property that is shown on that map on the southwest corner, we've pegged that piece of property for an electrical substation that will serve, it could have served two ways. It could have served as a, a tap off of the transmission system to a substation there or it'll be a substation off of our own internal system and then it'll augment that whole western side of the community. So we've wanted that piece of property for quite some time for an electrical substation.
Sam, do you want to speak to the?
Good afternoon. We've got, we've had a lot of development in this area. And so when we have heavy rains, we experience water issues in this neighborhood. And this is the ideal location for a pond to relieve some of that pressure. All that water drains from that subdivision and tries to get into DD1. At some point, DD1 shuts that off and it backs up. This will allow us to have some space available to store it for a little bit to let the pressure relieve in DD1 and then this pond will relieve itself.
And the. How much water will this pond be able to hold or?
I don't know at this time until we design it. But we will be designing for the drainage basin that's in that location. And as soon as, if you guys approve this, then we'll start designing immediately.
So, and you're designing it based on them and taking the, all of the, of the soil and using that and then that will be part of that, part of that design?
The production of, well, production of, the construction of the pond would be, would be to our design to standard, so Wilson would, would design this. But the excavation would be at least of 17,000 cubic yards of soil. And so that, that's sort of included in this negotiated price is the value of, of that less a value of the material that which they excavate, which becomes their property. And, and I think, Sam, we've estimated, you had estimated what, you know, if we would contract out that work, what, what that would.
And off the top of my head, I can't remember what that price was, but.
Yeah, the, really that $100,000 ends up being a, ends up being a net of construction and also the value of infill, which these folks happen to be able to make beneficial use of right down the road. So it works out for them and it certainly works out for us.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement as presented.
Second. So if there's no further questions, are any other discussion before we take a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to, oh, we better wait for.
Matt, this is just a general question.
Yes.
But do we have a listing of, and historically, obviously this way predates me, but you know, properties where we used that strategy where we had deferred assessments? And could we total up kind of what our gain-loss has been on that? Because that was a $188,000 bath. So, turned out this is a nice, this is a nice deal. It's a nice settlement. I think it works out for all parties and I like that. But I think on average, when we're evaluating the use of these tools and especially something like this, it's something useful to kind of look at it cumulative over time over different kinds of projects.
Yes. We can.
Okay.
So just, so I understand you're right.
With each project that contribute.
Each, each project that had a, a special assessment, those that were deferred, sort of the performance of those.
Indeed.
When did, when did the developers pay those and when did those, or not just developers, sometimes those got sold to the potential, but when did those get satisfied? When did those not get satisfied? And then build a, kind of a loss history around that.
So we could then use that as we evaluate going forward, different strategies? Thank you.
We'll also maybe identify where these still might hang out there, the ones that are left over.
I do appreciate the dollars going and paying off the rest of that, the $50,000 per year paying off that bonded interest. So that, I think that's a smart move there to get that again reduced, so.
So, again, 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the first amendment to Shoalman Crossing Phase Two Development Agreement, providing for economic development grants for the undeveloped property within a specified amount of time and indicating the intent to allow for a community improvement district on a portion of the property. The governing body is asked to look at this proposal following some discussions that staff has had with NC Camp Partners LLC. These are the developers of the Shoalman Crossing Shopping Center. They've indicated to us that opportunities exist to fill remaining undeveloped pads of Shoalman Crossing. However, the development pro forma shows shortfalls which would likely prohibit such development. The development of phase one and phase two to date have enabled the city to cover the debt service associated with the tax increment financing bonds ahead of projected schedule. Further analysis shows that if the remaining properties would build out with similarly valued projects in the next two or three years, it could accelerate the repayment of those 20-year bonds up to another two years ahead of current schedule. In an effort to act on existing interest in the community and to accelerate payment in full of the TIF bonds associated with the Shoalman Crossing project, the governing body is asked to approve the attached first amendment to Shoalman Crossing Phase Two Development Agreement, which would create a $100,000 performance-based incentive on each of the five remaining phase two parcels. This would be payable upon, only upon development of the property and the building permit of each project would need to be approved prior to the December 31, 20, prior to December 31, 2021. This creates the positive cash flow to facilitate the TIF repayment acceleration described above. The second aspect of the proposed first amendment to Shoalman Crossing Phase Two Development Agreement indicates the willingness on the part of the governing body to authorize a community improvement district for the north end of the inline retail development that sits along the eastern edge of Shoalman Crossing Phase Two. This would, this is a request for a CID, much like the ones you've received before. And in fact, the next agenda item is, is where you'll be asked to acknowledge receipt of a petition for a CID on that particular pad. So the alternatives are to approve the agreement or to deny the agreement. We recommend, our staff recommends approval. Funds for this economic development grant described herein would be as follows. There's a project development fund, 053-11-000-6171, 1002. This is where, this is where we have funded in the past or where we've diverted funds prior to the adoption of a star bond that were created by increased sales tax from this district. We had talked about using that at one-time projects. We've used it for downtown development. We've used it for, for some other, some other development-type projects. There is a remaining balance in this fund of $355,000. We would recommend using $200,000 of this money to satisfy any development which might occur prior to the end of this year. Then the revised 2019 general fund line item, once, it's in the 171 fund, which is the community development fund where, you know, our payment to Economic Development Corporation, our payments to Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Vision, Municipal Band. It's kind of an eclectic collection of, of, of different things in the community. But some of the development stuff that shows up in the general fund is here. So in that line item, there's an unobligated balance of $150,000. This line item historically assists in development. So any unused funds would be transferred at years end to the O5 fund. That's kind of the holdover fund for all the departments in the general fund. So that could support additional development that may occur in 2020. And then that same line item also exists in the 2020 budget, which another $150,000 not yet obligated would get you to the $500,000 total should all the development occur in, in the next, in the next 14 or 15 months.
I do have a question about that on the pulling of the, the timing of, at the end of 2021 to pull the building permits. Do you think that's, I guess I'd like to see something a little bit more aggressive than that, but is, and we all know I'm not a builder or developer or anything and such. So I don't really understand the timelines that are possible. But I guess is 2021 really the, the earliest time we could see some fruition of this investment? Or, because I think that's important as we put up some money for this.
Yeah, I think this, I think this incentive certainly works for the, for that improvement that would be made net between now and the, and the permits that would be pulled prior to December 31st, 2020. So like the next 14, 15-month window, that the, the extending it out for, for one year
Okay.
Gives, gives, gives a little more, gives a little more cushion. After that point, it's probably not going to produce the, the goal. I mean, it helps develop the property, so that's a positive. But really, the, the recovery of.
Right.
What we're putting in begins, which is really going to be materialized when these TIF bonds are paid off. So if we can scoot that payoff up by a year, this one that pays for itself. So any development that would occur beyond that point, we don't think the sum total of what comes back into the TIF bonds is, is sufficient to justify the expense. But prior to that, it is absolutely, the best case scenario is those hap, those happen sooner than later.
But this is kind of the realistic timeline?
Yeah, this is sort of the.
Okay.
You know, what do you.
That's what it is. It gives them.
And, and the nature of Shoalman Crossing is national chain retailer, some of which are held not by individual ownership, that they're held, you know, publicly. And so their site selection process is a, is a long one in where you hit certain windows to go before their property acquisition specialists that then go to maybe some other phase that finally go before a group that says, we're going to do these projects in 2020 and the, which we've probably already passed that window. So you, there could be a lot of work and a lot of progress made with a potential retailer like that in the next few months that won't result in a building permit getting pulled until 2021. And so that, that's probably that, that element of it.
Well, I mean incentivizing the build-out, right? And again, retiring those bonds earlier, I think that's, I appreciate incentivizing the build-out and saying, we really want to get serious about, you know, offering something to, to really complete this.
I make a motion, we approve the first amendment to Shoalman Crossing Phase Two Development Agreement.
I second.
It's been moved in second that we approve first amendment to the Shoalman Crossing Phase Two Development Agreement. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried.
Item 12C is the CID portion of the agreement you just approved. The governing body is asked to, thanks for your attention, Travis. The governing body is asked to acknowledge receipt of a petition for a community improvement district for NC Camp Partners LLC. For remaining pad site number one is shown in exhibit F of the first amendment to the Shoalman Crossing Phase Two Development Agreement. You've approved the, the amendment and so I will, I'll show you where this pad site is in case you aren't familiar from that wording. This is the inline, this is the inline property. And so it, well, that, that's platted as a big piece of, of ground. It would be anticipated that this would build an end cap to that, that inline row of, of stores.
I make a, I make a motion that we approve the acknowledgement, receipt of the petition and being, begin the community improvement district consideration process.
Second. Okay, is there any other discussion or do you want to make any comments? Since you're representing that.
No, normally, Mayor, when it looks like you're headed to an approval, what you do is just keep seated. But I, I would say, we just, Court Maxwell on behalf of NC Camp Partners want to thank the city for all they've done for this project and the development. want to thank the city for all they've done for this project and the development we've been able to do together, which has really become the crown jewel of Western Kansas and all of this area out there, and we think this final sort of little push is going to let us finish out this project, finish it out quickly. I do think to one of the commissioner's comments, there will be some things that could be announced relatively quickly in this process, that I think the community will be incredibly interested in, but we really see this as a whole package of, we're trying to finish out all of the parcels, and Matt hit that right on, that this process with national retailers is long, it's arduous, but we've obviously had a great amount of success together, we think we'll have some more success out there, and look forward to finishing out this project. We started, I think, eight years probably ago, so it's been a wonderful ride, and we thank you for all the support, and look forward to getting it done with you all.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, we've got a motion. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion for the remaining pad site number one? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good. D.
Mayor and commissioners, you're asked to consider and approve a retail recruitment strategy proposed by Finney County Economic Development Corporation, which would target infill and redevelopment opportunities. I'll turn it over to Lana here in a second, but would just like to point out that recent discussions with the development corporation, city staff, Downtown Vision on redevelopment and infill strategies have led to some ideas and new techniques or experiments that would help target properties where existing infrastructure exists. One such idea is, is proposed here, and Lana will walk you through it, but I'm just, would also kind of let the commission know that we believe there's some other, some other ideas that will hit, hit agendas in the near future, where we can, you know, kind of take advantage of, of some of the momentum that the community has, but in a way that begins to direct some of that momentum back to places where there's existing development or opportunity for redevelopment, making use of vacant pieces of ground where our infrastructure's already paid for and runs right by, or where maybe there's a building that has fell in a state of disrepair or under use, and could have a little more life breathed into it with new investments. So with that as the backdrop, and for this agenda item, I'll turn it over to Lana, President of Economic Development Corporation, to talk about the retail recruitment strategy.
I don't know what you need to hear from me. Good afternoon, commissioners. So, you know, this is kind of a follow-up to the discussion we had when we did the presentation with you, and took some of those selected findings out of the new retail report that, that was recently done for Project Rochester, as we call it, but the quick shop to Target Hill, right? So what that told us was that we were indeed correct when we were having these discussions, it's interesting the timing on this, but when we had the discussions surrounding the TIF district for Schulman Crossing, our argument was then, and, and still is today, that we do not have a finite trade area, we don't have only so much pie to share. So we said it then, we believed that to be the case, we believed that there were more folks we could encourage to shop in our community if we provided them the options that they were seeking. So that proved out, we have data now that very clearly says we were right, we could absorb some additional national retail chains, and we could certainly attract more folks who would, who would consider Garden City their primary shopping location if we were able to provide some of those additional needs and desires that they had. So right now, obviously, our staff is very deeply engaged in industrial recruitment, helping some of our existing businesses with some of the expansions they're doing, and housing development is certainly taking up a significant amount of our time, as well as workforce development, because as we create these additional opportunities, we have to make sure that we have the folks in, in the position to, to work in those opportunities. So one of the things that we believe, though, very strongly, is that because of our community's reliance on sales tax revenues, it's extremely important that we're not only growing the tax base, the real property tax base, which we have been very successful at doing, but also that we continue to create additional opportunities to grow that retail sales tax base. So right now, we have spent a lot of time, as an office, designing the, the locations where, where we know that we've maybe not attracted as much retail as we potentially could have, we, we've identified areas, as Matt said, that probably you need a little bit of, of assistance in order to get somebody in there. We've worked very closely with Sheila at Downtown Vision in talking through the building inventory that exists downtown, and the challenges that exist with that, so we feel like we're in a place where we can be pretty intentional and, and pretty demanding of a retail strategist at this point, so because we have already designed what we want, it won't just be, as you know, we don't like the spray-and-paray methodology of recruitment, we really like to be targeted and focused, and ensure that anything we are recruiting is going to be good for the long haul of the community, so that's why we're asking for these funds. Again, we would work, continue to work very closely with Downtown Vision on any of the infill opportunities in the downtown district, but certainly, all of the infill areas, I would say, within, you know, within the bypass, basically, of the community.
This would be a recruitment company, not, not a person in your office?
Correct. What we're asking is to contract with a company who could take our very well-defined strategy and targeted list, and then help us to initiate those conversations, simply something we don't have time to do as an office right now, and certainly don't have the time to devote to the travel that would be necessary to do that.
You're thinking about businesses out, businesses, recruiting businesses, right?
Retail businesses. This would be specifically for retail, right?
I was able to attend the, the economic development meeting, which, I mean, has tons of information, and if you can make, it is early, not, I mean, it's for me, for other people, but I love the time.
For, for our chairman.
Yeah, but the thing, yeah, the thing I think is really, I thought, they asked some really great questions, and I think that, I know you've vetted several different companies, and the person who has a lot of, already, these, these relationships built, which I thought was a really great argument, and the, the sense that we're really helping the whole community, and so I really appreciated the questions that they asked, and, and the way this came about, and again, knowing that those relationships are already built up there, that you, you couldn't really, adding a staff on, a staff person would not be the most economically wise decision with travel and everything else.
I make a motion, we approve the FCEDC program as proposed in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the FCEDC recommendation, which is alternative one. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. I'd have made a mess of that. Item twelve E, the city of Garden City has been awarded funding under the twenty nineteen Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant Program in the amount of one hundred six thousand ninety-two dollars.
Right.
And it looks like you're being asked to approve.
Taking it?
Chief?
I make a motion, we approve, the funding awarded through the PSN Grant Program.
Let's have him present first.
There's a motion.
Are we gonna, are we gonna argue against it?
No, yeah, no way.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
If you have any questions.
Any questions? It's been moved and seconded that we accept the grant, but is there any other discussion? Anything you want to comment on?
No, staff worked on this grant for about a year and a half.
Really well done.
It's a great grant for us to use, and help us provide some additional resources to combat some of the gang and drug and gun crimes in the community.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Sam's wondering why his are never that easy.
All right.
I think we're ready for the consent agenda, there's no changes. If you don't wish to pull anything off to discuss it individually, the motion would be to approve consent agendas, item F-one through F-six.
I move that we approve consent item, consent agenda items F-one through F-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, F-one through six. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Commissioner Dick.
Well, I had a thirty-five-page discussion prepared, but I think Roy wouldn't appreciate that, so I'm going to summarize it down to, the most important thing about today is remember to go out and vote, I'm sure everybody who's watching or in here already knows that, but it is the most important thing we can do as a citizen, to make sure you go do that and exercise your right.
Very good. Commissioner Hunter.
Yeah, I just want to, just reiterate that, I mean, this is one of those freedoms, one of the most important freedoms we have in America, and so the polls are still open, I think it's until seven o'clock tonight, and congratulations to everyone who is running in all of the different elected, you know, it takes a lot of courage and a lot of care for your community to stand up and, you know, vote, and just to put yourself out there, so I'm extremely excited for everyone who ran, it's, it's a learning process for all of us. I do want to say, I attended the Banner Art Auction, had a blast, I'm glad I didn't buy the fifty-two-hundred-dollar painting.
It was five thousand.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, okay, well, my wife was pinching me, like, don't even think about it.
Don't even raise your hand.
That's right, she don't even look sideways. And the other thing I just want to make sure and talk a little bit about, I know that during this time of the year, there's a lot of things that are going on, a lot of busyness, and I just, I want to just reiterate the, the amount of work that the staff goes into to complete these reports, I mean, it is a lot of reading, but the detail and the information is incredible, the mobile food thing was, I was a tongue-twister in understanding it, but I really do appreciate that. And I also want to say thank you to all of those who are supporting our staff and, and the employees, and, you know, this time of the year, I know it's coming up, just to be really thankful, I have had the opportunity to really be thankful. I also need to mention, I had a resident concern that we were poisoning the Eurasian doves, we are not, the city manager did check, and, you know, but there are a lot of, there are a lot of those around, that they've seen a lot around, and there are just a lot this year, there's a lot of other things I could tell you about them, I've learned more about them than I thought I would, from, but that's, I will share that with you later, if you would like to see me later, or email me, the Eurasian does, but they seem to be out a lot, so I just want to make sure and let that, that resident know that we are not doing that. And again, I just want to thank, thank you for all the, the work we are doing as a commission, and I'm excited about today, and then the work we're doing in the future, so that's it.
Yeah, I think to, to follow up on that in our pre-meeting, going over and looking at the goals that we set, and what work has been done on those goals, I, it was, it's a nice document, it's a very broad document, with some big, big goals, but there's been concrete work made in, in just about every area, and so I, I was very encouraged by that, and, and I think to that end, as we go forward in goal-setting, and, and the next year's commission, the next commission, and next year's retreat, it'll be important, and so attending that CIP meeting that will be Thursday, what time, Sam? About, starting at five-thirty, that is so important, it really does help us solidify and set some priorities as we go into that goal-setting, the new commissions, so thank you for everyone who's going to participate in that, and thank you for the work on the, on the goals from, again, staff work has just been incredible.
Okay, Commissioner Sessner.
Yeah, the pre-meeting was very informative, and staff has done a lot of work, and it shows that meeting all the goals that we've set forth for, for staff, you know, great to see that we're, the city, the cities teaming up, or the, when asked to help out, like with our robotics team, and I think that helped us get into third place and stuff, hopefully, hopefully we can get, get them up to Denver and help out there, and, but it's always great to, you know, community partners and partnering with our school district and showing our students, you know, different ideas and different avenues, and it's really great when we do things like that, because it gives them ideas on where they want to go as a career after they graduate from high school, at our outstanding high school. I did have lunch with our, our chief of, our fire chiefs candidates, and I know that's going to be a big decision, both are, the two that we had lunch with, very qualified, and it's going to be a tough decision, but, you know, it's going to be important for our community, so I just wanted to mention that. Other than that, remember to go out and vote, that's all I have.
Okay. I did attend the, Vivian and I attended the banner auction, and I wanted to share with you what I purchased, and request twenty dollars from each commissioner.
We're subsidizing your banner art purchase?
You do Venmo, I just learned how to do Venmos.
This is a motion, right? We're denying?
What's that?
Ten from mana.
Hey, I'm in on it.
Here it is.
Oh, very.
It is nice.
Who was the artist, Mayor?
Jasmine Palacidos, she's a recent graduate of Ole Miss.
Awesome.
Jasmine.
So I'll turn this over. Do you want to see? Other than that, we had, Matt mentioned, we had a meeting yesterday, the sales tax quarterly meeting, and took a tour of the, basically, the zoo project, and it's coming along, like you said, it's just puddings right now, but I would say in the next three months, I think we'll, you'll see quite, it'll be a lot of changes. And Mayor's Christmas party is the sixth at the Tarion, so other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you for the banner, Mayor, it's very nice.
Yes, thank you. We're adjourned. Okay.
Checks in the mail, Dan.